Call the meeting to order at six thirty-two. You can sign this.
Oh, these are my, oh, these are the ones that did it. Oh, look at that. I'm ahead of the game.
Approval of the agenda that may be amended. I don't see any changes to the agenda right now, Rob.
Okay.
In favor of the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes.
Was this just last time?
This was just last time. Let's push this to the next meeting, okay?
You got it.
Any public comment? Go ahead. Say your name, so whoever's taking the minutes can hear you.
Steve Finer, and I'd like to address something, I'd like to read something and then make a couple of comments, and then go from there.
Hold on one second. Maybe I have to unmute here. Think I have to unmute one of these.
Have to unmute the community room.
Yeah, it is unmuted.
That's unmuted.
No.
I knew I wouldn't be there.
How about now, Lacretia? Now? I would also like to unmute you, please make selection below or whatever. We're not talking.
There you go.
There we go. Okay.
It was under more for some reason.
Okay, it was under more. Well, anyway, we called the meeting to order at six thirty-two. We approved the agenda. We pushed the minute meetings minutes out till our next meeting of August twenty-sixth, and we've gone to open public comment, and Steve Finer was starting to talk.
On January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, a letter was sent to Chet Hagenbach, town manager, from Steve Finer, president of the Killington Fire and Rescue, subject department's future intent for the present building. At a special meeting warned by the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., on the twenty-second of January two thousand and nineteen, for the purpose of what to do with the present station, the following way motion was made and passed. The president sent a letter of intent to the town of Killington manager expressing that the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., DBA Killington Fire and Rescue, shall sell the land and building located nineteen seventy-three Killington Road following practical completion of the public safety building on Killington Road and apply the proceeds of the sale to the newly constructed building submitted, Steve Finer, present. I'm reading the letter because the corporation received a tax bill which was paid. I'd like to know why we received the tax bill. It basically seems that it was like a small piece of land that's across the street that was connected to the corporation. We never intended to keep that. Why it wasn't transferred to the town, I don't know, but I would like that corrected because we don't want to keep getting a tax bill. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's the intent. And then the second part was that money from the sale of the building was to go to the go towards the cost of this building. I'd like to see where that accounting took place. And then there was the sunrise account. I'd like to see where those assets were transferred to. And the third and final thing is the Wobbly Barn on Halloween of two thousand and twenty-three, that money was raised on behalf of the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. We're not actually looking for that money, we just would like to know where it went. It was never intended to go into town general fund. So I'm just looking for accounting and would like to resolve the issue of the corporation no longer getting a tax bill.
Yeah, he's going to come back to me. So Steve, you're well aware of the building that's across the street from your house?
No, we're just talking about the Killington Road.
No, I'm talking about.
It's across Killington Road.
No, no, he started off with a tax bill, and he said.
And the tax bill, the tax bill was for the property on nineteen.
No, Jim, you're, you are confused here. So that parcel land up there, and I know it, there is actually a little wedge of property that is floating.
That piece. That's behind what's her names all.
It's, no, it's next to Durkey, okay? And there is a little wedge that's in there, okay? And I am sure it did not transfer, or it's an error that was made by the listers. I think it can be easily resolved.
That's, I'm just bringing it up.
So I think it's resolution that we just need to speak to the listers to find out, and you should be refunded the money. Like, there's no question.
So if we're going to talk about that piece of property?
Okay, well, listen.
That piece of property that was sold, that was given from the Sherburne Fire District, Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, was a specific parcel that was put up for sale in the deed. It did not include the little piece of land behind Louise Harrison's house, because there is a sliver back there, okay? And there is another sliver that Chris is talking about, okay? There was a certain part of property that was put up for sale. Chris was not on the board in two thousand and nineteen, okay? But I was, and there was a piece of property that was put up for sale. That's what was given from your department, I don't know who, but came and said, this is the piece of property that will be put up for sale. It did not, and it was, it was put up for sale, it went out to the highest bidder, okay? And it was as is. If we want to change it and have Mr. Durkey to have that little piece of sliver and that other piece, then the deed that was transferred to the town to do the sale, because remember, we did not own that property, it was your corporation that you are the president of, that you read off, okay? And you gave us what could go for sale. And that was in the deed, and that was in the sale, and it was as is. So if you're saying now that you'd like to clean up that piece that's behind Louise Harrison's old house?
Hanson.
Hanson, I'm sorry.
Not Harrison.
All right, sorry. Okay, Louise Hansen's house, okay? And then the little tiny sliver, we're going to then have to make some change to that, okay?
Yeah, but I think it's easily correctable. Like, I, the intent of you guys was to transfer that over to us. The asset was not, the description probably didn't include what it needed to. Mistakes happen, okay? I've had it happen too, okay? So we just need to kind of get it cleaned up, that's all.
Lacretia, you have your hand up, Lacretia?
Yeah, so first of all, I think you have people in the waiting room that you need to let in.
Up here, let's let these people in. They're just going to keep on going. Give it a minute. There you go. Go ahead, Lacretia.
So the second thing, yeah, I just wanted to add to this conversation. I believe it was, I thought, I heard, Chad, back in the day.
I can't hear her.
I know, I can't, it's.
Do we have, hold on one second, Lacretia? Do we have a volume button? Hold on one second, Lacretia. Go ahead, Lacretia.
I believe that that little piece across the street, I am not familiar with one other than the piece that was behind Louise Hansen's house there, and most of it was eaten away by the river. But there is a little piece right on the corner too, but it was the idea of maybe offering it to her or to the estate because it really has no use for anybody else. But that's what I recall from, from that.
Right, because it's no, it's of no use to the person that owns the piece of property at the firehouse, and most of it was washed away behind Louise Hansen's house during I mean.
I think, but I think the issue is.
Maybe they're getting a tax bill for it.
The issue, the tax bill for one, the intent was probably another. And as a whole, maybe that, I don't know how much acreage it is, might matter to something to a grand scheme of a footprint, I'm not sure. Okay, that's, that's a zoning question, not my point.
What I'm coming at is, we've been working on a piece of land that's a tax bill, and Dave Kopeck is the president currently.
Correct.
Of the Sherburne Volunteer Fire. He's been your, he's, you are retired from the department, okay? And Dave Kopeck has been dealing with previous town managers on a tax bill. There's never been a mention about a tax bill from.
Never heard.
That piece there. The only tax bill that Dave Kopeck was questioning was the old firehouse on River Road, which you folks own at this time. And as of April first of two thousand and twenty-four, you own it, okay? There's a tax bill for that. Tax bills are sent out to property owners as of April first, the owner, okay? It's not settled yet of transferring it out of Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department.
Isn't that supposed to, wasn't that supposed to, if that volunteer fire department ceased operations, it was supposed to go back to the school, as I read, and then the school?
Well, here, Jim, this is from Dave Kopeck, who is the president, so, I mean, right now we're dealing, and I'm sorry, Steve, you were the president, but you're not, and you're coming in demanding answers, but I'm trying to get through this. Jim, I was able to get approval from the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. membership last night. This is just on August twenty-third. For me to sign the two documents Michael Ramsey had drawn up last month regarding the nineteen seventy-one agreement for the Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., to relinquish use of the lower fire station upon cessation of providing the firefighting services to the town. They also okayed the other document, which gives me the authority to act on their behalf in signing these documents. Dave Kopeck, who is the president, has never come to us about a tax bill on River, on Killington Road. This is the acting president. On the advice of our lawyer, being their lawyer, we have two conditions before I can sign the documents noted above. The town indemnifies Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. from anything that may have resulted from our use of the property. The language in the documents providing SVFD, Inc., one dollar shall be dropped and the term consideration shall be understood to represent the transaction. The lawyer is promising to get back to me this afternoon with the language for the indemnification clause. I will pass that on to you as soon as I get it. I will be on vacation from August twenty-fifth to August thirtieth. We've had your meeting, you're not on there, I guess.
I am.
Okay, well, the president is sending an email, okay? And like, once again, what I just don't understand is, is that we come to these meetings, and I'm sorry, we blabbed something out. I would like to see the tax bill, but I don't think we have to do that here. We could have taken care of this at town hall and go to the listers, because it's not our job. If you have a tax bill for Killington Road, you should have gone to the listers, not the select board. You could look at Chris all you want.
I know, I'm going to go. I don't disagree with you, okay? I think it's a concern, but I think one way or the other, it's easy enough to work out, okay? We just don't, we aren't trying to get your money, okay? And at the same time period, it needs to be figured out with title, and we should, if there is no interest, we should give it up to one party or the other, so it's identified on one side.
But Chris, we have the president of their corporation.
I agree.
That has not brought up any other property than River Road.
Okay.
That's all he did.
I agree with you, Jim, on that.
So this is the first I'm hearing of.
I know, and it's like, so it just kind of came at us, and so we just kind of, you know, so let's figure it out. That's fine.
And you send the tax bill to the, to us. So we're prepared, like, I don't have a tax bill. The only tax bill I know of that's in Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department is on River Road.
Dave and I talked, so he knows I'm here today.
Okay.
And he knows, and there were two tax bills. One was sent to us for the lower fire station, and that was returned to Michael Ramsey, and he held on to it to figure out what's going on, because that building was being shared, used by the corporation and by Killington Fire, present. So that tax bill was returned. Then we got the tax bill, the second tax bill for nineteen seventy-three, yeah, whatever that was.
So can we just get the president of your corporation to have a conversation with the town manager, please?
Sure.
Send the tax bill and go from there, instead of bringing it up here, like, three guys that have never heard anything about this tax bill on Killington Road. I've never heard about the tax bill on Killington Road. Rob, have you?
I have not.
Chris?
I stay out of the historical conversation.
No, no. But it's like.
We get it, we understand it.
We can make this work.
Yeah, you can solve it, yeah.
It's easily solvable, yes.
But just, like.
It's the way we should do it, all right?
Don't come in with a loaded gun, and then just like, give us the paperwork before, so we can work it out and hand it over.
The answer?
The firehouse part on River Road is your building. I don't know if we have a lease from us or whatever, but it's, it's your building. I think that the fire department's, the chief is here, we don't own that building on River Road. Let's get our stuff out of there. If we need to get a storage unit to put the stuff in, let's get a storage unit and get our stuff out.
Are we close to like, making this like?
No, because there's, we'll talk about an executive session on the real estate. They have their meetings on the real estate, we'll talk about it in, in real estate.
All our stuff is out of there.
All your stuff is out of there.
All our stuff's out of there.
Okay.
I mean, they had a meeting, I was told some stuff was coming up to us from the Fourth of July stuff, but I, I haven't talked to anybody from SVFD yet, so that's.
We've given you all that stuff.
Okay, that's, I was told that, that's why I just, but we, all that stuff will be out. I mean, the stuff that I was told we needed out, we got out, and I was just informed last week about the meeting.
And as far as, as far as the proceeds of the sale of the old building coming into this building here, I believe you and Steve Finer and others in Vito were on a board to make sure, there was a board, we didn't have anything to do with it. We'll have to, we're not going to be able to produce stuff today.
No.
So, but I just don't understand, like, you know, if you have questions.
I think there were cost overruns, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, there was a lot of cost overruns.
As I remember it.
As far as, as far as the Wobbly Barn, Lacretia can sit in on this question next, every single dollar that comes in, really, because now the fire department is underneath the town, it does go, some people call it the general fund, others just call it the general checking account, but the money was allocated from the Wobbly Barn for Halloween of two thousand and twenty-three, and I believe it was put into an account for them to spend on, what do you spend your extra money on? Is that correct, Lacretia? It's put into another account?
We recently created a couple of direct donation accounts and restricted funds, and when the chief hands over the money, he indicates which restricted fund it goes into, and that's the fund that it gets applied to.
And we did receive a check for the Wobbly Barn for two thousand and twenty-three?
I can't recall that I, that the check was specifically for the Wobbly Barn fundraiser, I can't recall that.
I remember it coming up, it was asked a question to me, that there was a check that came in from Killington Ski Resort, okay? And it said Halloween on it, and it was put into the general fund and then transferred to, but we can confirm that tomorrow or the next day. As far as going through how money was spent on a, I don't know, five million plus building to find out where four hundred and something odd thousand dollars went, you know?
I, I would.
Good luck with that.
Is I remembering things? I wasn't on the board then, but I think there was some cost overruns, and it probably went towards that. I don't think you're going to see a line item that comes in for that, but.
Yeah.
So it, it came in and got flushed through it, but I think that's something that probably can be shown, Steve.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. The, 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 we were like, money over it, and we used the sale of the firehouse to cover it.
That's what I said, I remember.
We're talking about something in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, or whatever. And I don't mean to be rude, Steve, but it's just like, it's two thousand and twenty-four, I would love to help you out a little bit more if I had a day or two notice of the questions, that's all. And I'd be still glad to do them here if you wanted to, okay? Just a heads up for, so, is there any other questions, Steve?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens input? Anybody online?
Aye.
What's that?
Not aye.
Okay. Board of Licker Control, is there any Board of Licker Control?
Yes, there are. It's North Star Cafe, it's renewal of their first and third class licenses.
They're making motions.
Motion is a little late?
Are they a little late? Everybody's on their own schedule?
On schedule. Most of our laws, they do it like for the.
Oh, by the season?
By the month or whatever.
Not everybody's on the same schedule either anymore.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Did not know, was not aware of that, okay.
Motion to the town clerk's office, the new laws.
Motion.
All in favor from North Star?
Aye. I'm staying.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it, thank you.
Center for Tech and Civic Life Nonpartisan Twenty Twenty-four Rural and Non-Metro Election Infrastructure Grant, I believe, Lacretia, you're handling this one.
Yeah, I think everything is in that narrative. It's basically a grant that became available by, from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. There was monies that were allocated, I guess, one time from the federal government, and it's distributed, and towns had the opportunity to, clerks, election offices had the opportunity to apply for this grant to be used not for your regular budget, but for items that would be above and beyond, particularly with regard to security, and I will be, one of the, one of the items that I indicated we would use the money for. We will be requesting and talking with, with about the possibility of having one or two police officers, you know, alternating, sharing at the time, but we would like a police officer on duty at the polling place. There is a lot of concern and a lot of discussion out there regarding security and even prior to the primary, when we had our, our training for our ballot clerks. That was actually one of the questions that one of the ballot clerks asked, it was a concern. So I understand we're in Little Killington, Vermont, and everything's very safe here, but, but it is a concern, and you just can't take these things lightly. So these monies would help pay for the salaries of those police officers that, that would be there at the polling place, it would not be across, that would be transferred out of the town, and then also any kind of supplies. If we do have a special town meeting, vote for any reason, we would be able to, to follow those costs under this, under this grant. So the grant is for up to five thousand dollars, and our office will be responsible for it. According to it, we have to do, close it out then, these terms.
So have we been awarded the grant?
Yes, ours already.
Yes. We have been awarded the grant.
Okay. So it's just basically our costs of security and, and anything else involved with that, with the election process?
And it's just two thousand and twenty-four?
Pardon me?
Two thousand, yes. Twenty-four only, and it's only from July thirty-one to December thirty-first costs that we have heard during that time period that are above and beyond what we would have budgeted for. So any, so we will have a lot of absentee ballots, for example, I'm sure, so we can hire people to come and help open absentee ballots. We will be having a special VCA meeting to see about the possibility of, to get authorization to start processing absentee ballots early, so that would mean opening the polls, you basically have an open poll, and there's a procedure for it, so that you, you open the machine, you open the polls, and when you close it at night, it doesn't close out the polls, but each day there's a procedure that's followed, but it allows us to be able to feed in absentee ballots, so that you're not doing that on election day. If I, if, I don't know if you recall, twenty twenty, we had quite a lot of absentee ballots, we did get them processed, but it took us probably half of the day to do it at the polling place, so, and there's, I would expect that this election will be as, as busy, if not even more than twenty twenty.
Lacretia, do we have the five thousand dollars in hand, or are we waiting for this approval to get it?
No, I'm not waiting for any approval, sorry. I had a deadline, I had to meet to get these funds, and.
Is the five thousand dollars in the account?
If we will have it this week, I received an email that it's on its way.
Okay. You got a motion for the clerk's office to move forward with the spending of up to five thousand dollars, the election infrastructure grant?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What happens if you don't spend five thousand? Hand it back?
You don't get five thousand.
Unless you said it's going to give them to the money upfront this week, the voters start spending it.
Spend it.
Yeah.
We get better cakes and snacks afterwards, counting votes, is that what I'm hearing?
Right. Exactly five thousand. There you go.
Public Works Surface Gravel Quotes.
So I put out.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. Center for Tech and Civic Life Nonpartisan Twenty Twenty-four.
That was us.
That was, that was that, so Public Works. Someone said I skipped something. I thought, were you saying I skipped?
I'm sorry.
Public Works Surface Gravel Quotes. I automatically just went back to the next one. Go ahead, Abby.
So I sent out a request for quotes on surface gravel to address various roads around town. Some of them are ones that the guys have been working on over the summer, some are flood, still flood recovery roads, and came up with a quantity of either cubic yards or tonnage. And I got quotes from Troy Minerals doing business as Florence, Crush Stone, Casella Construction, and Harvey's. Troy Minerals is the lowest, at ten dollars a ton, and the source would be from Florence. Casella was a very close second, but the quarry is further away, so greater.
Is this delivered, or is this?
This would be, yeah, this would be highway guys picking it up and, and placing it in the roads, or it could be contractors for maybe some of the flood recovery, if there's places, or if we need to move a little quicker to get more.
I would think that, even though we're looking at a bit of, from Florence, of forty cents less a ton, it's by far better for us to pull from Casella.
Say that last part again?
So if we're looking at forty cents a ton difference between Florence and Clarendon with Casella?
Mm-hmm. So it's from there, Clarendon Pit, the guys would have to go to Clarendon, it's not, it's not here in Mendon, or nearby in Mendon. So it would be further travel.
Which, which closer?
Florence.
Is it? Okay. And how do we feel about the product?
I'll let Kevin speak to that.
With, whether Wallingford, I call it Wallingford, well, because it's still Troy Minerals, both of them, theirs is always consistent, there's never any variations or anything in it, and it's one of those things where if we wanted a little bit more fines or something in it, they, yeah, we could ask for it, and they would work with us on it and stuff too. But other than that, I mean, it's, it's like hard pack. Once you've rolled in, it's literally just like hard pack.
I would agree with you on it, Florence, it's, that's supposed to be nail, you put it down as concrete.
Yeah. Once it's rolled in, I mean, there's, it's hard moving.
It's wet once, and then it's like, it's cement.
Yeah.
Cool. So you need a motion to accept the one from Florence? Abby?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the quote from Troy Minerals, DVA Florence Crush Stone for the, um, 2025 surface gravel proposal? All in favor?
Aye.
And then next is an update on Woodsbury Lane. Um, this is looking at point two five miles of town highway. Um, it's in pretty rough shape. Um, I did, I had talked to Pike previously with a quote for 16,000 just to reclaim the pavement, but there would still be some left behind that the guys would have to take care of. Um, Kevin and I discussed, you know, how much time and equipment he thought the town would need in order to do the same work and using the FEMA costs. It's about 8,000 if the guys do it. And then, um, on top of that, whether Pike does it, you know, if Pike does it, the guys are still gonna have to go back and do some cleanup. Um, and then we'd need to add gravel back where we're taking pavement out, so that would be another 8,000. So if it's Pike, it's 16 plus 8,000. If it's just the guys doing it, it's six, it's about 16,000 total. Um, we do have, as far as where would the money come from? We do have a gravel roads fund that we can tap into for the gravel. Um, if Pike were to do it, that gets a little bit trickier. We do have the resurfacing fund. Um, or the, the paving fund. But since we're not repaving it right away, it doesn't really seem appropriate to try to take it from there.
Or we, did we talk to the landowners?
I did reach out to, um, the person who had originally reached out to me about the road and let him know, because he seemed to be the contact, and I let him know what we were thinking. He put me in contact with another person. Um, a lot of questions came back, which is, was more, are they looking for our approval before we do this? Which is really, we have to do something. And we don't have the funds to rip it all up, rebuild the road and repave it.
Mitch Baroda who built Winterberry?
Yeah.
He contacted me two weeks ago because they're doing, uh, the vistas up in Dockbridge. And I spoke with him again this afternoon and said, you know, we need to take this road down to gravel at this point. As you were talking back at the last meeting, the underground, you know, nothing was done back in these eighties or whatever. We're gonna need to look at it before we ever repave it again. And right now, all we could promise you, Mitch is a gravel road and our intent is to get it back to a paved road. But can't promise you anything at this point right now because we have to take a look at it. And he said he, you know, have your meeting tonight and he'll tell his, uh, his group. I think there's twelve units up there, plus the one house on the right-hand side.
Good.
So, so there's.
Just trying to, you know, be transparent to the landowners is all and like, you know, not that they, they're knowing what's going on.
Yeah, so Mitch called me after I met up with him and Alphonse and, you know, he says, oh, you know. So, so we had the conversation today, so, I mean, it's not up to us as a board. I mean, there's, there's funds in the budget to do this. You don't really need approval from us for, he's just letting us know, which is letting, like Chris is saying, you know.
I can, I mean, I can send a letter. We have the addresses of the property owners. I can send, send a letter, not, you know. Just saying, this is what we're doing.
I would just, I, I would just give it to that one person because if we start getting onto some big roads and stuff like that, we're not gonna be sending it to the president or just getting every single.
Not that I want to. Just to be clear.
Yeah. It is a town road.
Yeah, great, you know, at least I have a contact to get the word out.
So send it out to the condo association person?
Okay.
I don't know who that one house is on the right.
They're local. I, I have an address.
Okay, and just send them also telling them what you're gonna do and what date so they understand when you're gonna be up there. How long you think it will take, Kev?
It should only be a couple of days.
Okay. We don't plan on shutting the road down at all at any time?
No. We can do one side and then switch over and work the road right back on the other side.
Cool.
So if you could just put that in the, put that in the letter to, to the president of Winterberry?
Of wind and traffic.
Yeah, alright. So, I would, so we don't need an approval for that. You're just letting us know to follow up.
Just an update from last week.
Planning Commission, Lisa, I think that's why you're here. Select Board Approval, you're asking for a letter to Vtrans regarding raise grant involvement?
Yeah, um, as everyone knows, we need to raise grants for $25 million, but now we're kind of wrestling with the administration of the grant. And, um, we've been assigned a, um, grant project manager from the DOT who's based at Montpelier Regional. And we also received a, um, two contracts, um, from the federal government. Um, one was, is, and these are just draft or preliminary grant agreements. And one is, um, between, um, US DOT and the town of Killington. And the second one we received was between the US DOT and Vermont Agency of Transportation. Where Vtrans, uh, with then a subcontract between Vtrans and the town of Killington. So, you know, when I reached out to our project manager, he said, well, it's really between the town and Vtrans as to which way you want to go. I initially thought, well, why would we want to involve Vtrans? It's not a state road. But I started doing some research and speaking to some people. You know, I spoke to Castelladino at VHB because they're involved with most of the raise grants in Vermont. I spoke to. And then I spoke to, um, the head of community development, South Burlington, because they received a raise grant um, to build a pedestrian bridge over 89. And she indicated that they did, um, have, they are having Vtrans administer a grant agreement. And they're very, um, pleased that they decided to go that route. Now, yes, their, their project has some Vtrans involvement, whereas ours doesn't. But nevertheless, um, she said, I would really urge you to at least have a dialogue with Vtrans. So last week or two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the head of the Municipal Assistance Program at Vtrans. Um, our representative from the Federal Highway Department. Jim attended as the select board. I attended as the planning, from the planning commission. Um, and we, you know, went through it and we think, following that meeting, I think this, this, my, my sense was that the town well served by going through Vtrans. This is a large, complex construction project. And, um, we don't really have, you know, the expertise in-house. And I think Vtrans assistance would be beneficial. Moreover, this is probably one of the overriding reasons is if we go through Vtrans, and this, remember, this is a reimbursement program, so the town's gonna be spending a lot of money. Um, and if we go through Vtrans, um, the invoices are processed in Montpelier. And if we contract directly with the DOT, the invoices are processed in Washington. So that could be a significant time difference, which obviously just doesn't matter a lot of money. Um, so we met with Vtrans and he indicated they were actually managing three raise grants currently, but all of them have state highway involvement. This would be the only one that doesn't have any direct state highway involvement. So initially was, I think, skeptical and said, you know, we're overworked, we're a bunch of staff, we're not who we want to do it. But, you know, I think that would be a catch. Or after we talked it through, he kind of came around and realized maybe this is a big, important project and Vtrans does want to be involved. So he asked us to go back to the select board. And if we're interested, send a letter to Vtrans asking for them to participate, you know, as our partner in this project. We discussed it at the planning commission. They unanimously endorsed the concept of working with Vtrans. So that's where we are right now.
Make it simple. Once it was said they didn't have to go to Washington DC.
Yeah.
It seems to make sense.
And we would have to hire someone anyway. And Vtrans, Vtrans and that conversation, they really don't make any money off of this. They're there for.
Yes, but actually, doesn't it cost us less money even to get their expertise?
No, I mean, there's no cost because they don't make any money.
Yeah, but without them, we'd have to hire someone?
Without, without Vtrans, Rob is asking, would we have to hire someone that would make money?
We're probably gonna have to hire a project, uh.
Manager anyway.
Project manager for this project regardless.
Regardless, okay.
You know, if we work with Vtrans, um, we have to follow all Vtrans procedures. I gave, I think, Jim a kind of a copy. I mean, it's just important to understand that, you know, all their, the consultant selections, all the procurement, um, you know, everything, the whole, you know, process for construction has to go through the Vtrans process. On the other hand, you know, for example, it has to be, if, let's say, we haven't selected an engineer to design the project. It would have to be one of, somebody on Vtrans approved list. But, you know, as we know, Vermont's a very small state and I'm sure, you know, every kind of sizable engineering firm is on that list. So.
So.
I'm not overly concerned. But, you know, right-of-way acquisition, just so, you know, we would have to follow the Vtrans procedure for acquire. If we, if we need to, and I'm not saying we do, but if we happen to need right-of-way, we would have to follow the Vtrans procedure. Maybe that's a good idea, you know, that probably keeps us, um.
Safe.
Yeah, safe, yeah.
Legit.
Yeah, from doing, from doing it the right way. So, you know.
It's like making a box.
So, um, Lisa, Lisa, Chris, Chris has a question as far as the billing. How, what would be the difference? Just go over it again. Say we get a bill, XYZ contractor has the, has the work. They start doing it. A bill comes in. If we went with Vtrans or if they take us, then what happens?
We, the invoice gets to Vtrans and then Vtrans gets it, then it gets from Vtrans to the, to the DOT. But, um, it's the same process we actually use now. You know, we have that very small of a grant with Vtrans, um, for, with the VHB for that Rule 100, you know, bike study. And, you know, they submit the, the invoices. We're working with Rockland Regional, so they review the invoices and that gets submitted, um, to Vtrans. And, you know, in this case, Vtrans pays it.
We're working at $25 million.
We paid it, but they reimbursed the town. But it's been pretty, it's pretty efficient. So I have no reason to think it won't be a thing.
I mean, the bigger thing is keeping it inside the state of Vermont and just not getting somebody else in DC.
Yeah, but I also think that for the process of us having to float that kind of money in the event when we're doing construction, we don't end up with a situation that we were a few weeks ago with floating $5 million from SRF funds. Now all of a sudden, just pass.
We're still got, we're still gonna be floating this money for a little bit of time?
We still have to float money. It's a reimbursement. So anyway, we, anyway, we, you know, shake it, the money is, is, we're out the money. So it's really, what's the most expeditious way for us to get the money back?
So Abby and I met with Doug Babbitt today, because he came into the Casella for the monthly meeting for the 133A water. And he had a little bit, and he completely understands on this one here that, um, this is reimbursement and then they would be willing to float this for us at that time. And then, um, on the other project, he understands, which is on the USDA grant for the road up above, that that's more probably going to be a three-year note or whatever from them because it's two years to complete, but then any kind of. We will not get paid from USDA the 18, 19 million dollars until the work is completely finished. But they're willing to, Community Bank is willing to do that. And they'll start getting the paperwork, you know, ready once we get closer to.
Okay.
But he's more of a three. So if I could just get a motion for, um, this to be signed by the chair. And this is not accepting. I, who, who has their hand up?
Does that somebody? Oh, no, never mind.
No.
That's your hand.
That's your hand. The two of them. So, um, get a motion to move forward with this.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's signed, Lisa.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we got select board members, feedback and concerns. We'll start with you, Rob, if you have any.
I have nothing, no.
Chris?
Nothing at this time.
You know, I, I'm just gonna say that I, for the public, I mean, anything, we can probably work a lot of this stuff out at town hall, coming into the, the foreman. If it's a road, Public Works, if you're not getting the right answers from the foreman that you think aren't the right answers or whatever, then you go to the Public Works, the town manager, um, Lacretia, the clerk, the listers for tax bills, um, Lisa for planning. You know, it's just sometimes sitting in these meetings, this is our meeting, guys. And it's not for us to get blasted and be caught off guard. We come here with our material ready and I just ask if, if we can get the material, if somebody has a question, to get material to us so we can answer it correctly when we're here. Or maybe we can get it answered before we even have the meeting. So that's it for my input. Um, any other business? Chief? Do you have anything? Okay. Executive session, um, at 7:17 for personnel?
Sure.
This is gonna be just the board talking to Tom about, Tom, one of Tom's jobs is to start looking for a new town manager. So we're gonna go through that. So we will not be coming out and making any.